Today's Thursday, January 18th. It's now 5:55 PM. Meeting of the Klein ISD Board of Trustees is now open. Representing the quorum tonight are Ms. Georgia Ann Wrightmeyer, Ms. Kathy Aralano, Mr. Ronnie Anderson, Mr. Doug James, Mr. Rick Mann, and myself, Phil Pilkington. As provided by the Texas Government Code, the Board of Trustees will now go into closed session in accordance with Sections 551.071. Private consultation with the Board's Attorney regarding all matters is authorized by law, including Board governance. 551.072, discussing purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. 551.074, discussing employment, evaluation, or discipline of personnel, including Board governance and including superintendent evaluation and contract. 551.076, discussing security personnel and devices. 551.082, discussing disciplinary matters or complaints regarding schoolchildren and/or school district employees. 551.0821, discussing personally identifiable information about public school students. 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. The meeting of the Board of Trustees will reconvene in public at approximately 6:30 PM. All right, have your attention, please. It's now 6:55, and the meeting of the Klein ISD Board of Trustees is reconvened. If you've not done so already, please silence your cellphones. Thank you for such a large crowd coming out today. Meeting was originally scheduled for Tuesday, January 16th, however, due to the dangerous weather conditions, we postponed and convened it tonight. As a school district of approximately 53,000 students, 6,800 employees, more than 25,500 active volunteers, we always appreciate when members of our community and staff members attend our meetings. Our shared vision is to ensure that every student enters with a promise and exits with a purpose. All of us working together, parents, teachers, staff, and community, will make that happen by focusing on pathways, challenge, equity, leadership, and continuous improvement. Thank you for partnering with us. So you'll know on tonight's agenda that a school district resident, employee, vendor, or potential vendor has an opportunity to address the Board of Trustees for four specific reasons. So if anyone in the audience would like to address the Board for any of those four listed reasons, would you please come forward and register with our Board Secretary, Ms. Aralano. Tonight, Ms. Wrightmeyer will lead us in prayer, followed by Mr. Mann, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the United States flag and the flag of Texas.
Just stand, please. As we gather here for the greater good of our students, which is, of course, the greater good for our society and our community. We've had an interesting beginning in this new year, but we come in a spirit of gratefulness for the privilege of guiding, inspiring, and educating our students. Thank you for our country, and we ask protection on those who are placed in harm's way, that we may enjoy our freedom. We pray for our school district, its leadership, and, of course, this Board, that we, as forever learners, foster an environment that allows our students to know and realize their full potential. May we make decisions with wisdom and extend compassion in serving every student, knowing their interests and passions, in order that we address their challenges and learning gaps. May your guidance help us in being good stewards of our resources. Bless every person who leads our student, from the bus driver who picks them up in the morning to the last teacher who sees them off at the end of the day. We come with deep appreciation and joy in serving you in this district. We ask all these things in your strong name, and those in agreement would say...
If you join, please, in the pledge to the U.S. flag and will follow with the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
School Board meetings must be conducted in accordance with strict Texas laws. For example, we cannot vote on any item that's not listed on the agenda. In fact, we may not publicly discuss items that do not appear on the agenda. All of our voting must be in public, but we can privately discuss items regarding personnel, discipline of students, the acquisition of school sites, matters of school security, and specific items requiring legal advice. However, the final view must be in complete view of the public. Please understand this meeting is for the Board to have discussion, to deliberate, and take action. So I'd ask that you refrain from any comments or public demonstration during the meeting to allow us to focus on the matters at hand. The superintendent, in consultation with the Board President, prepares the agenda in notice of our meeting, which is distributed to each trustee one week before the Monday night meeting. That way, if individual Board members have questions, they can call the superintendent prior to the meeting. Therefore, many items that are recommended for approval, the trustees can quickly determine if they agree. So if we seem to be moving quickly through the agenda, it's only because we're prepared to make a decision without further question or discussion. We deeply appreciate the public trust that you've bestowed upon us, and will continue to work diligently with the school administration on behalf of your children. Again, you'll notice on the agenda that due to the necessity of postponing our meeting, which was originally scheduled for January 16th, it was decided to move most of the recognition items to our regular Board meeting in February. And so we are now ready to proceed with the agenda.
One of the things we did not want to move to February was recognition of our outstanding Board of Trustees. And so I'm going to ask Judy Romato to come forward and recognize our Board. Judy?
Thank you, Dr. Champion. January is School Board Recognition Month in Texas, and tonight we join other districts across the state in honoring the countless contributions of these locally elected advocates for public education. In Klein ISD, these seven dedicated people help kids soar to success by donating their time and talents because they are committed to helping our learners find their purpose. These seven amazing Promise to Purpose investors are student-focused, relationship-driven, and forever learners. They are also strong advocates for public education, and each one believes that together we can equip every student to be a pathway explorer, equipped scholar, values-driven leader, and forever learner. This type of commitment is rare, and one that we all cherish and are very thankful for. So let's watch this short video to hear from others around our district.
Thank you for keeping our district safe each and every day.
Thank you for giving up your free time to help our school district.
Thank you for giving us computers to help us learn.
Thank you for giving us rules.
Thank you for caring about children.
Thank you for giving your time and energy to Klein ISD.
Thank you!
Empathy.
Gratitude.
Integrity.
Perseverance.
Service.
Thank you for helping us soar!
Schindelwolf wants to thank you for helping us progress. You support all our efforts and help us soar to success.
I am a class boy. I am a class boy. I am a person. I am a class boy. I am a person. I am a class. I am a person. Oh, look! One, two, three, four, and five!
Thank you!
Thank you to our awesome School Board from Klein College High School!
We just want to thank you, School Board. We're ready for the new year, School Board. Friends rich who love attending school each day, we're ready to soar and be on our way. We appreciate the opportunities that make Klein ISD a great place to be! We just want to thank you, School Board. We're ready for the new year, School Board.
Oh, that's cute. Thanks to Kate Hope, along with the students and staff in our schools, for honoring our outstanding Board with this video tribute. At this time, I would like to welcome Landon Reed from Commissioner Kegel's office to present proclamation to the Board.
Well, thank you all for having me out tonight. I don't know how I'm going to follow that up. I should have been on first and been in the warm-up. But it is always a privilege and an honor for me to come out to do these things, especially for Klein ISD. Y'all were really close to my heart. When I first got married, my wife was a Klein High School teacher, so... So we were five years at Klein, and it's real dear to my heart. So when I got to work with the Commissioner and come out to you guys, I try to do my best to help you guys out. But the Commissioner has these proclamations here for you guys, and I'm going to proclaimate. Harris County, Precinct 4, and the Honorable R. Jack Kegel hereby recognizes all the trustees for serving as trustees for Klein Independent School District. As Precinct 4 Commissioner of Harris County, Texas, and on behalf of the citizens of Harris County, we offer our sincere gratitude for the compassion, the guidance, and the outstanding leadership you have provided within the Klein Independent School District. Your hard work and dedication have made a significant impact on the lives of the children, families, and the fellow educators in our community. Therefore, I hereby proclaim the month of January 2018 as School Board Recognition Month. R. Jack Kegel. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much, Landon, and please pass along our appreciation to Commissioner Kegel. Finally, we want to present each of you with a token of our appreciation. So you can peek now. This word, "Cloud Kite," designed by Chelsea Sebais, represents the words in our guiding documents.
Oh, how cool is that?
We think it's a fitting tribute as you, with servant hearts, guide our work, so all of those that work and learn here can soar to success. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Judy.
Great idea.
Usually, at this time, we'd take a break, so the Board could meet all the honorees. But since we moved those recognitions to February, we're going to move on to the citizen inquiry, unless by chance I missed a scout that was out in the audience. I don't think so. So we'll continue our meeting with our citizen inquiry. Ms. Aralano, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
We do not.
Okay. I like this. So then we'll continue our meeting with our reports. Our first report is going to be the zoning update, I believe.
Yep. So taking off her Board recognition hat and putting on her attendance zoning hat, Judy's going to give us an update on zoning, Part 2.
Thank you, Dr. Champion, President Pilkington, members of the Board, and Ms. Balding and guests. We have received, as of earlier today, because we did receive a few today, 92 Let's Talk Dialogues with an average of an 8.3 feedback score. So that's pretty good. So we were really excited about that when I looked all of that up. One of those people that contacted us told us that 31E, which is Cypresswood Glen, the Cypresswood Glen area, that we originally had moved in the first preferred draft from Strark to Schindelwolf because it would create a pure feeder pattern for Krineup. We discovered when this lady called me to talk to me about the preferred draft that that area actually goes to Howdy, and it was mislabeled in PASA's data. So we didn't want to pull out one piece, one tiny little piece of Howdy, and send them to Schindelwolf, because then that would ruin Howdy's already pure feeder pattern. So we started looking at ways we could keep them at Strark. Well, as you remember, Strark was already fairly overcapacity in the last preferred draft, but it was manageable. But putting them back created a further hardship on their capacity. So we started looking at different ways we could help with that. So, keeping all of that in mind, I'm going to point as best I can on that over here. Right here is where 31E was. So in this preferred draft 2, we're keeping that area at Strark. Now, we needed to consider moving some areas out of Strark, because you know that's one of the intermediate schools that's on the eastern side of the district that we want to keep as stable as possible. So some of the things that we asked our demographer to look at was moving some areas from Strark to Schindelwolf. So we basically moved this area right in here, which is 30B, Farm at Meadows, 31A, Country Lake Estates, and 31D, which is Brandywine Pines, the Park at Cypress Glen, and part of, another part of, Country Lake Estates. The beauty about moving those areas from Strark to Schindelwolf is it gives Roth a pure feeder pattern. In the last draft, and currently, they're divided into two different, they're split into two different intermediate schools. So we liked that. Another thing that we did was look at moving, and this was in a number of the different options, 15E and 15F. So that's Bridgestone West, Villages of Bridgestone, Stone Forest, and Sentera Lakes. So this area right in here, moving that from Strark to Kremel, because once we moved this area, it made for a non-contiguous zone if we didn't also move this area. And if you'll recall, if you've read some of your Let's Talk Dialogues, we've heard from a number of folks in this area about wanting to move to Kremel. They liked that, those options that we had earlier. So some of the things that we liked about this is it further relieves Strark to stabilize their capacity, and it also keeps Kinley, and I'm going to go ahead and move to the, well, this is the intermediate, the elementary map. So it keeps Kinley from being split three ways. Kinley is now only split two ways, so that's a plus. Now, when we moved this area into Schindelwolf, it got Schindelwolf's capacity a little too high, and so, and that, because that's another one in the east side that we would like to keep as stable as possible. So we are looking at moving this area right here, which is 10B, and that's Forest North and Forest Ridge, to Hildebrandt. Okay? It doesn't create a further split in their elementary, and so we feel comfortable with doing that. And also, we've got a new elementary school coming on in this area anyway. One thing I do want to note, and I'll move to the high school map to show you this, when we move Farm at Meadows, it creates a kind of an anomaly in the high school zones. So just, we're just putting this out for consideration, that we might consider moving this area, 30B, to, from Klein High to Schindelwolf, so they will have a pure feeder pattern in Schindelwolf. I mean, it would, it looks like it would be odd pulling it out, but that would be the only area going to Klein High. And there's not very many students in that area. There's only 18 high school students currently and 11 intermediate students. So if we did that, that's something that we could consider starting in 2019. So here are the numbers. Strark's numbers, if you'll come down here to Strark, Strark's current, Strark's utilization with these numbers, pulling out all of those subdivisions, looks really good. They're very stable. Schindelwolf is stable as well. They barely go above capacity in the 10-year period. You'll, you'll notice when we move those 215E and F up to Kremel, it does make Kremel's capacity a little bit higher, but they are closer to the new school, so they will get relief when the new school is built. And the other thing is, they're just barely, for three years, those first three years, going to 121% of capacity, which is manageable with temporary buildings. And Kremel has a larger footprint for temporary buildings than Strark does. So we feel really pretty good about this plan. We wanted to bring it to the Board for consideration and also be able to put it out on the website so people would have an opportunity to look at this and give us feedback on the preferred draft 1 and preferred draft 2 prior to February, rather than just bringing something that's completely different to the Board in February. Are there any questions? Mr. Mann?
Looking with the opening of the new school in 2018, Kremel never grows below. Kremel stays way above the whole chart there.
They do.
Even with the opening of the new school. So I think we need to really relook at that, because everybody else is, some of the others are down at 85%, 83%, and Kremel's up across the board. I think that needs to be relooked at.
And part of, part of what this does, Judy, see if this is right, it, because Strark was in that situation in the preferred draft.
Yes.
And so by moving this, this, this moves it to Kremel. And the reason that this makes more sense to us is because the new school that's coming on in 20 something...
2022.
22, 21, 22?
2022 at the earliest.
That Kremel would, would be able to get relief at that point, which would make more sense than those, trying to pull more kids from Strark. So it was really trying to stabilize that east side as we move forward.
Correct.
Yeah, that's precisely, that's exactly the situation we were in between draft 1.
We had a number of options that pulled Kremel down. The only place to really move anything off of Kremel's west side is pulling them into either Hildebrandt or the new school, and then the same thing would happen to those schools that's happening here in Kremel because of the, the way the subdivisions are laid out. We have tried moving pieces in all of those options from that west side out of Kremel, and it just makes the problem move to another school. Does it create a better feeder pattern? It really doesn't, because the new school is going to be built on this side of the district, and so the feeder patterns are going to be adjusted when that zoning happens. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, our next report is the Audit Committee Report. Mr. Zimczak was unable to be here tonight, but the report was listed in the executive summary of your Board packets. If any of you have any questions about the report, we can answer them now. Okay, moving on to action items. First item for consideration and approval is the proposed modifications to local Board policy, CH purchasing. The first reading was conducted on December 11, 2017. May I have a motion?
I so move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Next, we have the approval of the Superintendent Evaluation Instrument. May I have a motion?
I so move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Next item is consideration for approval and acceptance of the annual audit of all funds for the period dated 1 September 2016 to 31 August 2017, as presented by the firm of Weaver &amp; Tidwell LLP, in accordance with Sections 44.008 of the Texas Education Code. May I have a motion?
I so move.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Next is the approval of the District Improvement Plan for 2017-2018 and the Campus Improvement Plans 2017-2018. May I have a motion?
I so move. Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. We will now consider for approval the construction documents for the 2018 Elementary School Sound Enhancement Project. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second? Any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. The next item is the Out of District Services Agreement and Cost Sharing Agreement for Water and Sanitary Services for Elementary School Number 33 from Bridgestone Municipal Utility District. May I have a motion?
I so move.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Next, we will have the approval of the Contract Award for the Howdy Elementary School and Niche School Track Additions Project. May I have a motion?
I so move.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. The next item is consideration of bid number 18190 for property and boiler machinery insurance. Now, understand that the district's recommendation has changed to remove the option to automatically renew coverage for additional years.
I have a motion. Mr. President, I move that the Board award bid number 18-190 for property and boiler machinery insurance to the incumbent agent, USI Southwest, beginning February 2018 through February 2019, with rates and costs guaranteed for 12 months, and as further detailed in the updated executive summary provided to the Board with the Board Packet.
Okay. Any motion? May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
I'll abstain.
Okay. We have 5-0, none opposed with one abstention. Motion passes 5-0. So moving on to the consent agenda, are there any items that you'd wish to remove from the consent agenda? Start with you, Ms. Aralano.
None.
Ms. Stranderson?
None.
Okay, and I have none either. So all those in favor? Opposed?
I'll abstain from this as well.
Okay. And we have 5-0 with one abstention. We're now ready to approve the minutes of regular meeting on December 11, 2017, and the minutes of the special meeting on December 4, 2017. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. So moving on to calendar review, please note the following events. Monday, January 22nd, the Board will conduct its required team-building training beginning at 5:00 PM at the Multipurpose Center. On Wednesday, February 7th, TASBE is conducting its grassroots meeting at Region 4. This requires registration with TASBE if any Board members wish to attend. Monday, February 12th, we will have our regular Board meeting, which will be at the Multipurpose Center to accommodate the number of participants and our recognition items. And Monday, February 26th, there's a Board workshop at 6:00 PM. I'll now move on to Board comments. I'll start with you, Ms. Ripley.
Okay, I have a couple of things. First is, I really appreciate the zoning discussions and meetings that, they were handled, I feel, with, with extra grace in listening and acting on suggestions. And secondly, the robotics thing, Kathy and I both were able to go out to Lone Star University Park, and the young woman from Klein Oak, who was just so excited and energetic and informative about every part of it, it was exciting to know. And the Lone Star employee that was there said this is just, it was a great advantage for them for their PR, because they feel like they're kind of hidden back in there, and that Klein, Klein's involvement has been advantageous for them as well.
Ms. Aralano?
I also wanted to mention, and I loved going and seeing that, and was on, I was jealous that we never had anything like that when I was in school. Also, I got the opportunity to visit Hildebrandt to the live museum, and that was a lot of fun, and seeing the excitement of the kids during that, and giving us all their information about all their, all their people, that they were actually being at the time, and so that was a lot of fun, too.
Ms. Stranderson?
I, I want to underscore what Kathy said about the live museum. Absolutely extraordinary. It was a wonderful time and a wonderful way to have those kids learn. And lastly, I'm excited about the stops and the starts. I really am. Is that if we do it three or four more times, Dr. Champion, we might have it down.
No, thank you.
But I'm glad we're starting again, that's for sure.
Mr. Mann?
I want to thank Judy for the zoning. That's wonderful. Thanks for the answering of the question. If any of you didn't get a chance to hear the men's choir, you missed a, you missed a show. It was phenomenal. It was, it was absolutely exciting. So thank you, Klein, for putting that together.
Fine arts.
So I wanted to, to take just a minute to thank you for your service. The, the creation that you have in front of you, it's, it's remarkable that those words are included in our guiding documents that didn't exist a year ago. I mean, a year ago was when those were being adopted and vetted, and the community was, was creating all of these things. And as you, as you look at that, some words that, that jump out at me from that, that document, as well as "thank you," is committed and student-focused and integrity. And I think that really captures who you are as a Board. And so on behalf of all of us in the district, we wanted to say thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for volunteering for a cause so much bigger than, than your individual self. And for me personally, thank you. I'm just honored to get to walk alongside each of you as we travel this journey together. So thank you.
Well, as much as I like recognitions, I like 725.
Well, as much as I like recognitions, I like 7:25 even better.
Can we put something in the board record? This is early. 7:25 PM, and this meeting's adjourned.